All right, join, join, join. There you are. All right, audio visual.
Yeah.
I'm going to admit you. I don't see Rowena.
You don't see my other one?
No.
Abby, are you?
I'm muted.
Okay, I think we're good. I think it was me echoing. Oh, now what did I do? There we go.
Technology.
Getting it going here. Okay. See that? Okay, good. I don't have to search a chat that is reading now.
I don't even know where it's at.
Wendy sent it this Friday, didn't it?
I haven't opened it yet.
So.
That's my search.
I do. Good.
The little slippery slide rose from not Highland that P S A.
That snowed off?
No, from Scarborough.
Did they give much down there?
No, they didn't. But once I came up over Highland, all of a sudden it was.
We thought it was a couple lunches down there.
Nothing today. Especially yours today.
Well, that's.
They can't say it's one thing like. Not the whole thing. Forget it. That's peace. You know, the models.
Oh, thank you.
And some of them are just. You know, he's different. He said this.
I know. Saw me. And Abby, you said it'll still download my chat? Yeah. Perfect.
Brian, you get a call from Daniel.
Yeah.
Okay. He asked me for a couple of questions. He says, well, I'll also be.
Yeah, he talked.
Okay. So you're gonna handle that part too?
Yeah.
They have to be on that first.
Lily, where'd you get that fabric? Okay, Kate was looking for some like Day of the Dead fabric. Okay, she wanted me to make her one. I'm like, if you find the fabric, I'll make it.
So Rosa Far, Mary and Jess said they're gonna be on.
Okay. Okay. Nothing yet, but I'll keep an eye on it. Brian, I brought my pad and a red pen. So if it's one of them that wants to talk, I'll tell you. As opposed to a public comment. We're only four months into this. I'm getting it down now.
You guys spent some of that cash.
What, microphones?
I don't have my hair in any.
I said, we guys spent some of this.
Yeah.
That happened.
Sometimes I still. Can't hear. Can't see.
I use that practice. I mean, three years married. That's probably how you.
That's right.
We, the last year before the half. Last couple of years. Joanne would bring her wedding. She had left. If I need to really do it all by myself. I used to give the normal advice in the reception. Two words you need to know. Survive your marriage.
Yes. Which was like. So your process. Or I want to answer.
I don't process this. Old school. We asked you just. Hard. I like it. It's a little classy.
Chris, there won't be much for you to see. Because I've turned the chat to where they can only chat to me with a private comment to the moderator. So. There's no more public chat.
Oh, that's too bad.
No, it's not.
I think it's good.
No, because I was told I have to read everything word for word, and I can't read all of the chatter. And they end up in a conversation with each other. It's not.
Yeah. Oh, well.
If they were in person, they wouldn't be able to do that.
We're already, oh, willing and not.
I know. I just can't, I can't track. What's a public comment.
When I made that book, it was actually.
Yeah. Yeah, Brian said there was gonna be a couple, but nobody yet. Actually, I think. I think Jess might be in here. Until we start.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Brian. Hi, Chris.
Okay. See so far.
All right, with all of your order, it's 6:01. We have a forum.
To declare the United States of America. To the republic which stands. On our nation. Indivisible. Libertine.
All right, special board meeting. We're gonna review. Current plan that we have and how it's going right now with the four days a week with everybody in school, Georgia, etc. We're gonna give a presentation on that. And then from there, we'll go into talking about. What we're gonna do moving forward, if there's gonna be any changes or not. As we start that action item, that's when we'll start. We can get some public input there. And then we'll go into more discussion from there. So Georgia.
Sure. I guess, I think I can teach for everybody when I say that. You know, the four days are working out nicely. We, everybody's starting to settle into a routine, and that feels good. Wednesdays kind of allows for all of us to sort of take a breath and, and. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a few minutes, but. I think teachers are, you know, really appreciating that time to, to be able to plan and, and meet with kids. But yeah, I feel like it's, it's, I'm hearing good things. I haven't heard any. Discussion from any of the community at all. People seem to be settling in pretty nicely with it. Want us to say anything else?
No, I just, yeah, I agree. I think it's going well. We're finally settling into something. It's been so much change so rapidly. Just when you get your idea, it changes and. You know, the time we have kids coming in, we're doing interventions. Asked one high school teacher and they said. Wednesdays are a very exhausting day, but it's really nice because your independent kids kind of work on their own. You get to really meet. Virtually, but really meet with your kids that are maybe a little bit more behind or struggling. But yeah, it's going well. It's a nice day of the week to meet with those kids, give the teachers time to prepare. You know, across the board, teachers have said it's approximately 25 to 30% more time to teach now. And that takes care of some of that, so.
So Georgia, you said. So since we had our meeting last year, you received no comments or questions. Everyone.
No one.
Really? Interesting. I haven't had that same experience, so. Okay. Indy. Do you have the data from last time which we didn't have, which was? How many in school, how many are homeschooling? And how many are doing remote learning? Because I understand homeschooling is not something. You manage curriculum, the parents do with their part, but how many are? Remoting for each grade and how many are in school for each grade?
Well, just to speak to the homeschooling piece. Because we do have some homeschool students that will come in either for specials or they may come in for a class here and there. So we do have that. I think there's probably three of those. Chris, you have the homeschool total though, right?
The homeschool total from the state, which is where they have to send their application down. For the 2021 school year, right now there are 17. Registered from our issue 78. That's a comparison of last year. Again, going off the D O E, D O report. Last year was four.
Okay.
Now, there are some folks at homeschool that are applying to the state. But those are the state numbers that were provided. Because those numbers also have to go into the E P S formula when you're dealing with the 279, which is the state funding. Election number 17 right now on there. That was as of yesterday.
Enrollment, total enrollment we have, because those 17 don't count for that.
It's 197.
So 197 and then the 17, do count or don't count?
It does count.
So 197, how many are remote?
15.
15, is that various grades?
It is. We have three in the elementary.
Eight through five?
Oh, sorry, four. There are. Two at the middle school and 10, you have 10. At the high school level. That's, that's transitioning back in, yeah.
So can you repeat the middle school and high school numbers? You said two middle school and eight high school. So total of 14 students out of 197?
It'll be 15. We have a middle school student that's transitioning from remote. Back into the classroom, but that transition actually.
So that would be 13, right? 15 is gonna be 14. So we're gonna drop to two in middle school, eight high school and four elementary. Is that correct?
You're right. That's correct.
Four elementary, two middle school and eight high school.
Yes.
And. If all 14 students transitioned back into in-class learning from a facility standpoint, what would that? What would that impact? I gotta cut in here real quick. The Zoom room can't hear. Abby, we take Mary out? We still have a forum?
Mary hasn't said anything. It's other people just, if Georgia maybe could come up here a little.
Hello, I'm here.
Where's the microphone?
Yeah, if, if Mary needed to bow out.
Okay.
They can hear everything here, but if I don't turn it every time somebody's talking and then it freezes every time I move it.
Mary's for sure not coming. Karen's not here. I don't think she'd be affected to sit there. She comes.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I think it would work better. Or.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Sorry, guys.
I can do it. I mean, we have 25.
Can you hear me now?
And would it be possible for the, if we can't solve the audio thing tonight, that if we can?
Let's, let's just focus on what we're doing right now. We'll worry about the next meeting later on. Let's just focus on what we're doing here.
Well, it's unacceptable to me. This is the third.
Question, let's just continue the question.
And we're not getting the audio for these parents.
Okay.
And you're saying they need to participate in conversations you guys have made. You want parents to participate already here. To me, it's unacceptable. I'd like that noted for the rest. Okay, so there's 14 students that are out of 197 that are remoting. My question was, if those 14 students. Transitioned back into in-school. What, would it affect any of your counts and your spacing per compliance? With state statute as you outlined? At the six foot spacing, which I understand that's the model we're using, correct?
Yes, it could. Yes, very well.
How many grades?
One, two. One, two, three, four, five rooms would then be over capacity.
Which grades are those? Middle, elementary?
Elementary, A3. A3 to be over. And K, second, fourth and fifth.
So fourth and fifth even with the split?
Fifth may.
So you have a four, five split?
Fifth, fifth might be okay.
Okay.
But this doesn't include adults in the room either.
So is fourth and fifth okay or not okay?
They would be.
Fourth would not be okay. Fifth.
Doris says she thinks they would be over.
The action item here and consideration of the second quarter.
Fifth would be close. With no support, if you had any support, class would be different.
Does anybody?
I'll yield my time at this point.
Does anybody have any questions for the review of the current educational plan? Anybody else have any counter questions on that? Okay, then can I get a motion to consider the second quarter of the educational plan?
I'm moved.
Jenny, second? Good, thank you. All right, let's start the discussion. They can hear us at home now, Rowan, is that correct?
They're having trouble hearing Georgia.
Okay.
I'll try to speak up.
Do we have any, first of all, anybody public here that has any questions or comments to start this? Anybody in the Zoom room, Rowan?
Nope, Jess, they can't hear these guys. That's all I'm getting.
Yeah.
All right, more discussion? Did you want to continue?
Yes, sir. Okay. So if we pass a resolution to go to. Five days a week. We would be able to accommodate it except for eighth grade, kindergarten and second grade. Is that my understanding? Or am I putting, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth.
We, we can't, we can't make remote kids come back.
I'm not saying you have to make them come back. I'm just saying if they all chose to come back.
Whether it were five days or four days, we would not be able to. Doesn't matter. If you're one day, you won't be able to get them. And you'd be closer than six feet.
All right, and so I know you said over capacity with those three grades. In those three grades, you have remote students. Most of those remote students have decided they're gonna stay out for the semester or what's the thing?
The remote students that we currently have in place right now have opted to stay remote.
Until through second quarter?
Yes, through the end of the second quarter.
Okay. So right now, to pack, so what, what my concern is. Is I obviously, as a public education, we want to provide people education to every student. What my concern is, is that. With everything going on with the students. While I appreciate that the staff and those appreciate the time that it allows them with the Wednesday remote. I feel that we need to look at transitioning back to the traditional five days. That being said. We used to have, I think, an early release on Monday, which was Tuesday, correct?
Yes.
But right now, we're not operating that. We're operating four full days, correct? Or are we doing early release?
Our remote, our remote, on our remote Wednesday, the students are released at 1:30.
So it's basically early release on there, but they're doing that remote.
Yeah.
So. The excerpt from the previous discussions, you guys had said. And, and tonight you said prep time is an additional 25 or 30%.
That's reported by.
Reported by the teachers. Is that to accommodate the two different learning platforms versus having everybody in school?
Some of it is, yes. We, we also are spending a lot more time doing intervention one-on-one with students during that day as well.
And honestly, at the, at the. Well, question 35, well, you know, well, last year when you did math lesson, you'd have two sets of students, you'd have like a couple groups of kids. Now teachers have to prepare 11 separate learning patch for every table for every lesson. You're teaching reading to 10 kids instead of three groups. Just trying to like, I did K, K1 recess today. I have no idea how they do it. Those kids, the masks came off. I mean, there's so many pieces that take so much energy. That without that Wednesday, I don't know what, how we'd get them. I do not know how we do it.
I, we do have some teachers here that are prepared to speak to that question if you'd like.
Excellent. I'd like to ask.
Can you speak to the intervention thing on Wednesday in a little more detail, please?
Sure. Sure. So. You know, because of some aggression that we're seeing because of, you know, students being out in spring. We're trying to address those issues. We have in some classrooms, kids at very different places right now and much more so than we would normally see in the, in the, in the common year. In addition to some multi-grade classrooms that are happening. This prevent, you know, this, this time on Wednesday allows for our intervention staff, for the classroom teachers. To offer students to actually come in if they wanted to get some one-on-one and some extra support during that time. So we're trying to address. A lot of need. And that day helps, you know, allows some time to do that.
The students are coming to the school on.
They have the option to either come into the building and meet with the teachers in person, or they can remote in with the teacher.
With our non. Teaching staff and I know we have some head tags and some of the teachers, what happens on Wednesdays with the head tags?
Yes, most of the head tags are still remote. They're still following their normal schedules that they did with their special education students that. Yeah, a number of special education students are also remote. So they have a daily plan to work with these kids. And our interventionist, our Title I interventionists are also working one-on-one with students during that day.
Would it be possible? That. On Wednesday, that it. that on Wednesday, that if there are parents out there that are struggling with childcare and those pieces, are there any staff that can help on Wednesday so that they can come in and still work remotely spread out, whether it's in the gym at six feet apart or something like that? How about some of our working parents, our working single parents, some of the others that struggle with the childcare and the challenges and still having to take time off of work with their, with their children to try to meet some of those needs?
I, I, that is a good suggestion, but I'm not prepared to speak to that question. I, it's something that we could look into.
How much time would that take to look into? Is that a one or two weeks? Is that a three or four weeks? Is that something we could give that?
I mean, I, I would have to, I would have to know how many students we're talking about.
Okay.
Fair enough.
We have, I don't, yeah, honestly. There's no one sitting around with their hands on Wednesdays.
Didn't say there were. Just trying to understand.
Can you describe the, uh, we can break it up into elementary, middle school, high school, what the, uh, teachers are doing on Wednesdays. I guess most, most, uh, I'd like to know about the elementary teachers, because they're, uh, not able to just have the entire class, you know, just do the Zoom on class. They need to actually make lessons. Can you describe to me a day in the life of a Wednesday for an elementary teacher group?
I, I will try to do that the best that I can, and then I'm gonna ask Lily Gackey and, uh, maybe, uh, Brittany DePompo to also speak to that, because they're in the trenches with it. But basically, teachers during that day, they are, uh, regrouping, they're reassessing, they're intervening, they're meeting with vertical teams. Um, and what I mean by that is they're meeting with teachers above and below the grade levels that they teach, um, because they are having to teach, uh, multi-grade, you know, they have to have, they have to differentiate in their classroom right now because of where kids are at. Um, and, uh, they also have to, um, they have to plan, they have to develop lessons, they have to record lessons, they have to upload them on Seesaw, they have team meetings that happen. Um, and I, I can't remember if I mentioned the intervention part, you know, with working with kids one-on-one. They also have meetings with parents on the sta- on these days. Um, so there's a lot going on. Lily and Brittany, is there any more you'd like to speak to? I know at the, for the specialist piece, Lily's now taken on two extra classes in her day because of the K-one and the four-five split. So that's, you know, a great deal of more planning because, you know, you're addressing two grade levels and two additional classes, but I'll let you speak to it.
I teach a special round too.
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be good. And there are a couple of teachers with comments here too.
Could I ask a question?
Are we still in here? No, go ahead.
Georgia, you said that they're now having to differentiate between reading and I'm assuming math themselves in the classroom. Well, at a greater level than they ever have. Okay. And the, and I guess my question is, the program that we had before where K through two was sort of differentiated and met at the same time in smaller groups, is that no longer apart? No, it's no longer apart. Because of where we're at right now and not having the ability to move within classrooms and move within the building to move into other spaces, that's not happening. So they're doing their literacy lessons in the class.
You can, you can sit.
Are you sure? Okay, well, I need you standing, so.
Whatever you want.
Um, so we prepared a short novel for you guys. Um, it's really not that long. Um, so anybody who's ever spent any time with me knows that I talk a lot, so I tried to channel everything into a, um, you know, less squirrel-like document in here. Um, so I'm just gonna go ahead and read it out loud and hopefully everybody in Zoom like can hear me. Um, Wednesdays is important for staff as well as students. As a specialist teacher, our lessons require a lot more preparation as materials cannot be shared and cleanup and assembly of work cannot be in collaboration. We have recently had two extra classes to, added to elementary in order to accommodate the number of students. This means that specialist teachers have to come up with two additional classes worth of curricula. This is a lot of work, especially on such short notice. For instance, the music curriculum must be completely rewritten as students are not allowed to sing. Right now, our students are faced with heightened academic issues as well as heightened anxiety, and teachers are working harder than ever to help them both academically and emotionally. It takes time to meet these needs as well as extra thought and preparation that we put into our lessons and our projects. We are finding that our prep time during the week is inevitably shortened and sometimes completely removed due to sanitizing as well as supporting other teachers for bio breaks and washing and help with students. We attend multiple meetings on Wednesdays to help assess how our practice can be improved from week to week in these strange times. And as to better help and engage our students, this also means a lot of extra paperwork. These are some of the struggles we face as specialist teachers, and I know classroom teacher struggles may differ, but they're equally and occasionally even more difficult. They are done with a smile and what we feel is best for kids. Teachers with school-aged children are often not able to stay as late in the afternoons because of new restrictions about our children being in the buildings, limited busing, and smaller offerings of after-school activities. For teacher parents, these after-school hours were imperative, and they're not there anymore. With this, we are aware that remote Wednesdays can be difficult for parents, but we need to remember that we are an institution of learning and that we are working harder than ever to deliver academic and emotional care. Parental work interference shouldn't play the commanding role in a decision to get rid of remote Wednesdays. And I think I stand with many colleagues in saying that the students that have chosen to go fully remote need teachers to be accessible for individual meeting times, supply drop-offs, and support on remote Wednesdays. It would be almost impossible to meet the needs of our remote learners without this time. I know personally, I have seven fully remote students. Sonia has between eight and nine, and we do do deliveries every Wednesday. As for our students, it is obvious that the unnatural feelings of distancing, wearing a mask for six and a half hours a day, and the unsurness of our realities is exhausting. Wednesday provides a much-needed break for these kids, even though they're still working on assignments remotely. I know that my daughter loves school, but she looks forward to Wednesdays to just feel normal and get a break from the social discomforts of being in a public setting during these times as hard as we try to make it normal. These Wednesday times are imperative for the emotional health of our students and teachers. Schools around the country are experiencing massive teacher burnout rates. And I believe that because of the way we have re-entered school, we have been more successful in keeping our staff and our student body emotionally centered by not creating an overwhelming environment for both of us. Sonia, do you wanna speak to that more?
I just wanted to, because Chris asked a couple of good questions and things that came to mind, and it's, um, I want you to know that when I first came back to school, I wanted to come full-time. I didn't, I didn't wanna have to recreate the wheel. Thirty years of doing this, I, I already had it down, and I was pretty darn good at it, so I didn't wanna have to reinvent the wheel. So this Wednesday thing for me was a no-go from the beginning. I didn't want it, but quite honestly, now that I'm in the classroom and I'm doing this work, I just left my classroom a half hour ago. I mean, this is not like we're sitting around and eating bonbons and comparing, no. I tell you, I, I even seen another person in the building, it's lucky. Um, the change between classes is huge. You think about a classroom, you sanitize that piece of paper and that pencil and you're everywhere. You ever seen a pack of Crayola crayons or a pack of, uh, colored pencils and markers? I mean, this is, it's my prep period, and when those kids leave, everything gets wiped down. Stools, tables, scissors, tape dispenser, my area, the walls, the doors, and there's always so many, I mean, I see Jeff and the janitors running around like crazy, washing everything, but by the time that bell rings, they don't make it up here, and not, not, just not anybody. They have their hands full. And so we all onboard are up here doing this whole level. So my prep period, I was just a photocopy, email parents about grades, import my grades to a classroom, uh, go and photocopy my lessons, type them all out, make sure they're right, and that I have enough to go and get in my car and drive to people? That's not happening in my prep period. I'm lucky if I get out of sanitation station in time for the next round of kids to come through. I am very concerned that equal access, what's happening is those remote kids come in on Wednesday, and the kids that are here the other four days, they're at home and they're watching the remote kids actually get some time. And many of those remote kids have health issues. They cannot come in this building. And so I, I wish we could have them here full-time. Boy, my life would be easier. I wouldn't be photocopying and running around and racing down. But quite honestly, I see the needs of the kids, and they are genuine, and the teachers are gonna burn out. We throw so much more back on the plate. I'll tell you right now, there's some people that aren't gonna be here for that. So that's just my feelings. And then any questions or?
Yeah, no, sure. I got a couple of questions. So how much time are you as staff members spending cleaning above and beyond what you would consider like the normal transition thing, like after school and before school?
Whenever they can get in here, before and after school, the janitors take over. It's that, that in-between time, when you only have a bell ringing, you have five minutes. You, you don't say it's your job or your job, or how come you're not doing this? It's like, no, this is safety.
I understand, but I'm asking if, is there a need for more janitorial staff during the day to help with that part?
I can't really speak to that, Jeff, but I, I'm, I'm seeing them like full tilt.
Yeah, they're running around this building a hundred miles per hour.
I understand. I mean, we, we deal with this in the, in the, in the other world too.
Yeah.
And I wanna make sure it's clear for the record, I'm not saying anyone's staying around. I know there's been four-five comments on that. We're all working hard. We've all had to reinvent all our businesses, you know? I worked April seven days a week. You guys know the hours I worked for that. I'm working now twelve to fourteen hours a day. It's just the way you gotta do it. You got clients that have to meet, you can't, you can't just have people in a revolving door. My office used to be that way. People coming in, you gotta wait, you gotta, we sanitize five, six times a day, every time this transition, every two hours, so I can get that. So I think what we've gotta figure out is-
But can I just interject a little bit, because, I mean, you're people that doubt who can choose to come in that door or not come in that door. You, you can be your most precious commodity here. These are children that I adore, and they're yours. And I don't wanna do anything at any point in time that crosses that CDC guideline. They are my top priority for safety.
And I understand that.
And Chris.
And we also deal with those pieces of, um, and in the outside world, some people do, we don't control any of the environment. People just walk into our.
Real good.
Yeah, Chris, Erin wants to interject since we're talking about the upstairs. Um, she says she gets twenty-five minutes between eighth grade and K-two. In that time, I am sanitizing and preparing materials for the next class. This is supposed to be my lunchtime. I eat lunch at three o'clock because that's when I am done getting everything sanitized at the end of the day.
Yeah, I understand. I get lunch once a week too. So I understand these pieces. It's a challenge for everybody right now.
I know.
So what I'm trying to ask is some questions so we can get this out to the public and everybody understands what the challenges are. Thank you for preparing that piece. I think it's very helpful. And I'm curious to hear what Brittany has to say from the, uh, from the K through five groups and anyone from middle school and high school to talk about that, because I think everyone needs to understand how that, how that works. I mean, and, and understand the challenges that are there. I don't think it's abundantly known to the public. I've suggested before that, you know, through your social media content, we have a nice page for the school that we get some of this information out and explain that way there. I mean, not everyone reads email. It's the public that needs to see that too. Your taxpayers don't always give the school email, so. So your recommendation that you're saying because of the specialist most pieces, you're actually providing a better educational experience globally to your entire school by having that Wednesday?
I'm telling you just two things. It allows those students that works, but equal access for education, allows those remote students the ability to come in, and I do, that I have kids in my classroom who aren't here the other four days that are working in the class on Wednesdays while I'm zooming in and out with the body of, uh, the student body from far. So it's providing equal access. And another thing that it's happening, which I'm, I can attest to the high school, th- this is not a social hour anymore. I mean, a lot of it has to do with distance, but a lot has to do with the fact that you have four days, and your grades are gonna go in whether you're using your time wisely or not, but there's not a lot of slacking around. There's no social, like, this is about getting the work done, and they are being very efficient, getting it done, and Wednesday's providing that time to work independently and not socially. I think, I think it's working very well, and I, I think the quality of work and the amount of work is, I mean, look around.
And as student reps, can you guys give any insight on your side of it?
Yeah, I, I really like the Wednesday too because, um, because it, along with helping the teachers give me more time and everything, like, just for me personally, I can have like a little more sleeping in just so I can just go on a computer, because I'm up late doing homework a lot, because like Sonia was saying, the workload is there. It's like you're going a hundred miles an hour during school. There's no stop, and it's got for lunch to get work done. And like Sonia, she starts cleaning ten minutes so that classes even end. I have to help her when I'm done to clean up the tables because like she'll have, being another student, but she'll have ten or like twelve children in the next one. So there's so much work that just needs more time, because I don't see teachers doing this on weekends. They need a day to set up for all the classmates and everything.
Um, a lot of my friends that I've talked to really like the Wednesday thing. The biggest thing that I hear from them is that a lot of our classes, like English and history and science involve a lot of discussion, and most of the time those Wednesdays are the days where we take the class and we discuss things, like discuss books we're reading or things we're learning in history and science, because you kind of have a mask on and it's easier to have those conversations. And it's also a day that kids aren't distracted and they do their work, because there is a lot more work this year. There's credit recovery, and there's just a lot of stuff, because a lot of kids are behind. So I think overall, a lot of kids enjoy it. And I do see as a student how much more work it is for my teachers. I mean, I walk into math class and like, if I forget my calculator, I feel bad using one, because I know Rowan has to clean it. So I think the sanitizing thing and stuff, I think that they do appreciate that extra time. So I can just notice that from a student's point of view, that the Wednesday is essential to the teachers as well.
Because I wanna also say that I, some things have been going on, and we're, we're almost to the point where we can start thinking and considering that. I mean, me personally as an educator, um, but I'm, I'm concerned that the rates are on the rise. It's Halloween trick-or-treaty time, then you're gonna go right into Thanksgiving and Grammy and Grandpa and Auntie and cousins, and then you're gonna go into Christmas. And those factors based on something that we have right now working, and we're still keeping that remote piece fresh in everybody's mind, and they're still used to it. Sometimes it's something, and we have to fully remote, and then we dropped all those pieces, and we're not on top of it.
I think that's, uh, that's the second half of this discussion is that we gotta segue into that. I, I think, based on, whatever you want to do, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Whoever saw the governor's address yesterday, things are not good in Maine. And I'm obviously speaking for myself here, but we're having this discussion because there is consideration going into five days. I personally swing overhearing from the staff and what's happening in the state, and there's community spread across the state now. Just to me, there's a caution light that could turn into a warning light. We wanna keep the caution light. And to become more aggressive right now, just to me, does not, does not pass the smell test. I just don't see why we would entertain it.
I'm actually, I'm actually there with you on that, Brian, with the, I watched the governor's address yesterday as well, and personally, I think we should table this discussion to the November meeting as an item, just to review where we're at and we continue to work on what the plan would be for five days, but, but push it out, because I just don't think we could go to that right now. And it's very clear from the student input and the, and the staff input that we've gotten that, um, we've got somewhat of, and, and, and the comments that Georgia and Seth made about stability in those pieces, I think that is there. I do would like, I would like to see, with some of this CARES Act funding that we do have and some of this funding, that if we can find a couple more part-time folks to help with, um, cleaning or those type of things that we can do to help, help out especially during the day hours. I know, and, I know unless staffing's changed a lot, which it may have in the janitorial, it used to be, most of the custodian staff comes in and does like a two-to-ten shift. I don't know what, and, and then you got some people during the day that maybe it make, might make sense to try to see if we can pick up a couple more people to help, help with that, that overall piece, because I think it's a, it's a, it's not only the cleaning part, I think it's also the pressure part, saying, oh my goodness, if I don't get this cleaned right, could I be exposing somebody? And I think that's, that's part of the challenge. And I agree that this community spread that is going on, not in this area. I know in Franklin County, we're still relatively low. Forty-eight, last time I looked, yesterday I think it was, and, uh, we've only had one official that I know about up here. And, uh, but still, um, we are a travel destination area, and the, the issue that we did have up here was related to somebody coming up, so. I'm not opposed to tabling this discussion and, and pick it back up again in, uh, November as far as timelines, but not saying we, we look at doing anything. I don't plan to come into the November twelfth meeting and think we're gonna start something on that next Monday. Um, I, I just would like us to continue to work towards the five-day plan and those pieces. And if, you know, if that allows us some semblance down the road, but I think where we're at right now, that tabling this motion to go forward and keep status quo would probably be a logical step.
Is there anybody here? Go ahead, Jenny.
Um, just, I said this last time, the kids who need the most support at this point- Um, just, I said this last time, the kids who need the most support at this point are beginning to get it, I'm assuming on that Wednesday from what you've said. And I think if we think of nothing else, we've talked about this being for kids and the adults in the building. You know, we have to thank them. We have to appreciate what they're doing. But I think if we look at that Wednesday as support for those kids who need it, um, that will help us get back to normalcy. Uh, you know, that will help us get back because they will be in a position to not need all that time.
So, first of all, I'd like to thank the staff and administration for all that you guys are doing. We all know this is a very difficult time and situation. I think that we've only been four days for a month. Um, it's working. Doesn't seem any reason to change it. I frankly don't think we should even think about changing it this year. And probably not into next year because things are only gonna get more tenuous as we go into winter. Like the flu, so we're gonna get more cases. So, I think we should work on perfecting what we're already doing. The biggest issue that the town has with this, I believe, is our working parents who are in a very difficult situation. So, rather than trying to force a school into something that could potentially have greater ramifications, I'd like to see the town try to figure out how can we create spaces where kids can go? Remote, what time does the remote day start?
They, uh, on Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
It will, yeah, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. So, at eight o'clock, and then they have early dismissal at one?
One thirty.
One thirty. So-
Eight thirty for Alabama.
So, but if kids, if kids have a place to go where they could access the internet and do their studying, and maybe there'd be a parent or somebody who could volunteer to be there. And I know that we have fiber optic in Portis Tap House, and we'd be more than happy to provide our facility to a certain number of students so that they can have the distancing. To go work at Portis Tap House from eight till one thirty, so that parents can get to work. And it seems to be like if the town got together and tried to figure this out, we could figure out ways for those parents who really need to work on Wednesday to be able to do that. So, I don't know how we start this discussion, but I would like to see if we can't get a way for these kids to be in a, in an environment where they can access remote learning and allow their parents to still be able to go work. I don't know whether that is possible or not, but I think if we could do that, that would be helpful.
I just wanted to, and I, and I don't know, Paul, uh, you know, but at one point, there was a, um, a learning portal, learning hub, when we were still like two days a week, and that was happening. I don't, it's kind of fallen off since we've gone to four days, but it may be something that, uh, I believe Caleb Alexander was, um, the one at the town office who had organized it. So, it may be worth starting there with her to find out, you know, how that went and what might be. But they did have that, I think. I don't know why it's not continuing to happen.
So, I worked quite a bit with Caleb on this to try to figure this out. We worked out something we could use in the Sonic Hall. We also talked to the library. The library has one hundred over one hundred, which is the second-best internet in town versus what's here. And the problem wasn't the, the pieces and logistics. The problem was with the state. Because the learning portal setup was very similar down in Farmington. And DHS came in and said, this isn't illegal daycare, wouldn't let them do it, and broke them off that they could do that, also do that in Philly. So, the problem is the licensing part. That's why I suggested at the beginning, we were talking about this, to figure out it's up hard to do it in the school. And I know with the school, you have to be fingerprinted and those types of things in order to fit with the volunteer piece there. And I don't know if, as a school board, we have some flexibility on that. It probably benefited by administration where we could allow some exceptions there to get through those pieces for some supervised part. I'm not opposed. I think it's great idea to use Paul's facility. I think it's great idea the Masons offered to use their facility, the libraries offered to use theirs. But the problem is the supervision piece and in compliance, uh, with DHS. And DHS is the one that's given the most pushback on this type of thing because they have a certain licensing procedure, and it's two to three months out in order to achieve that. So, I guess if we could, if we started now, maybe we can get that set up with somebody, get the licensing part, and then that could be ready for spring semester. But that's the challenge with that part for the working parent. So, I don't disagree with Paul that we just go, we go status quo from now to the end of the year with the, with the four days. I don't disagree with that at all. I think that that gives some semblance of reason. But I would like to see if we can figure out some kind of a piece for some of these parents that are, are, are having to take unpaid days off, those type of things on Wednesday, that we could figure out some corner in this forty thousand square foot building to accommodate, whether it's five kids, I don't know how many there are. If we could reach out and pull that and figure it out, I think that's a piece that could be solved. And if we've gotta hire a couple of people to do that for those Wednesdays and get that approved to do that, let's do it so we can solve this. Because I don't think there's any gym classes going on on Wednesdays. Are there with the specials? So, if we could set up, we've got a facility space, we've got internet, we just gotta get labor, and you guys are licensed as a school so you can have kids in. So, that would be the easiest solution to solve the Wednesday piece. Not trying to tell you how to do it. I'm just trying to say, these are the challenges, and this is the problem. The DHS has been very difficult on that part. And so, that's why I'm, I'm putting that out on that. Because I think if you can do that, then I think it becomes more palatable for people, for the working parents to be able to do that. There is this coverage from eight till one thirty.
So, I just wanted to share, Shelley was the one that talked. She believes that the DHS has set up emergency licensing, and it's rapid licensing now. She believes that's been set up. And the, the idea, you know, in theory, Chris, that's a good idea, but right now, we have jobs posted in empty application folders after a week and a half. There's no one applying to help. That's one of the biggest problems. You need people and no one's applying. Like, you can't even beg people to come to work. But Shelley did say that may be an option now, emergency licensing.
But, yeah, I'm not sure that time for emergency license. Sometimes at the state, I've done it with other emergency licenses, it's six weeks ago. So, it's hard to say, but we can check into that.
You do have a parent comment. Um, John LaMesa says, people aren't going to have money to feed their families if we don't go back to school full-time. And his kids don't agree that they like the Wednesdays.
Yeah, I, you know, we're trying to address that here. We're, this is an eighty percent solution. We're on school four to five days a week. Uh, we are obviously concerned about people that need to work, and we're trying to come up with a solution to that. Is there anybody here who, do we need to even put this motion to a vote? Does anybody here want to move beyond what we're doing right now? Or number-wise?
That's why I said just retable this motion.
I understand.
I just wondered, community and kids have told me that parents and children have did a survey. What are the results of that survey? What is the community status and what are the children's? The majority of the children that have seen me at both of my businesses, I have to agree with the young ladies there. They like being home on Wednesday, um, for various reasons. I don't think I've heard anybody say that they wanted to come back. I have had parents talk about the childcare. But I just wondered about the survey piece.
Uh, so I, we can speak to that. You're correct. The survey went out to our students, our staff, and parents. Um, we, the, the question was, do you support having remote Wednesday stay intact objectives? Uh, we had a hundred and thirty-two responses. Of those hundred and thirty-two responses, ninety-one of them were yes, and forty-one of them were no. We also asked why or why not. So, for why not, um, the responses were, um, we don't get to see our friends, no in-person specials. So, the, the kids really like having their teachers in person to do for specials. Uh, there, sometimes there can be more distractions at home. Sometimes technology can get in the way. Um, teachers, uh, have a really good way of keeping, um, me on task. That was one student's response. One student said, I just like school. Um, uh, it stifles to some extent student progression, and, um, some parents cannot work, as we talked about. Um, for those that said why they would like it to stay, um, this, the, the responses were, it's just really nice to be able to work in my own space and be able to move and, uh, take a mass break. Um, the, the building can get cleaned, teachers, um, the teachers can, you know, the teacher's workload, as we've talked to, has increased. Um, it's good in, you know, it's good to stay in tune with remote learning. Um, kids can, uh, teachers can regroup, reassess, um, they can plan, they can meet with students on an individual basis. Kids can sleep a little bit longer. Um, we know that there's enough swinging cases. That's concerning for many. We want to stay in the hybrid one. We don't wa, and I just want to be really clear about this. We do not want to go back to hybrid two. That was, we want, we want to avoid that at all costs. That was hard. That was really, really hard. Um, we want to stay with four days. Um, we want to, we, we need some time just to settle into something, and there's just been a lot of change, and that's been difficult. Um, it also allows students, those remote Wednesdays, allow students to build, to work on building independence and flexibility skills. And we're starting to see some fatigue set in with some of our students. And so, Wednesdays just gives them a little bit of break mid, midweek. Wearing a mask eight hours a day is exhausting. It really is. And I know many of you have to do it. We all have to do it. But, you know, for students, the only time a student gets a break with, from a mask is when they can drink, they can eat, or they can go outside. That's it. They have them on all the time, and it's exhausting. So.
What's the first day of the second semester?
The ninth. The ninth. Oh, second semester, sorry.
I mean, the first day bad for Christmas.
The fifth, right. Does it workshop on the fourth?
On Christmas break, yeah, we have a workshop day that, yeah. Um, I know you're ready to vote, but I just want to throw out there, we always do Ski Tuesday. Nothing better than a morning skate. So, there's some Ski Tuesdays that could be happening, CASA and the CIA. If we have some of these group programs that are there, maybe they can look at their scheduling, and maybe that gets fills in the day. I mean, I think there's a lot of potential to do some other things out there. Um, but I, I do think it needs organization and some time to rethink and to regroup and to do what's best for kids.
Uh, speaking as superintendent of only seventy-eight, but a couple other districts, we've looked at the four-five, and it's been successful. And we've asked the boards in both of those, we've asked the board in both of those districts to continue it by quarter so that we can evaluate after each quarter. It's like we phased in. Now, we want to remain and then see what the choice would be come the end of the second quarter, which would be towards the end of January. Um, one district, we've gone from four-five, we call it the hybrid one. We call it four-five in four, remote on Wednesday. We had to go back to the hybrid with the two cohorts this week because of things that happened. And you could just see the disappointment on the kids' faces. The four-five is working in schools, and I would recommend that, uh, we continue to maintain that here in seventy-eight. It is working. Thank you.
I'd like to make the motion that we stay with the hybrid one till January fifth. I don't know, but we keep working on what the five-person plan would be so we can look at it for second semester.
Can you just say you, you, we should do this the rest of the year?
I just did, yes. So, January fifth, I'm saying, yep.
Uh, you did mention you meant the rest of the calendar year.
Rest of the calendar year. Uh, so that, that way, I think it seems like it's settled in. It's been four weeks. There's some pieces here, but at least that way, there's no anxiety about what's it gonna be like at November twelfth, what's it gonna be like for December twelfth. We just make the commitment now.
Through?
September, um, through January fifth. But at the November and the December board meetings, we continue to work on what the five-day plan would look like if things have changed. Uh, definitely, nobody wants to go back to two. I know I have some friends down in Palmetto, he said, one parent sent a sick parent to school, and it just wiped out half the middle school that's sent home. And they're all scrambling now to even do testing in Portland. It takes three to four days to get a test done in Portland. So, I think, based on what's going on and the governor's stuff yesterday, I think that way, staff, I, I'm hoping that will help staff and whether parents are happy or not about the four, by, it's a set pattern for now, the next two months, so people can just, we settle into it, and then we work on what we can do to try to meet those needs of those parents that are struggling with the, the daycare piece, those type of things. And we put a constant, if we, if we can remove kind of that cloud of what's gonna change next, the next two months, I'm hoping that'll allow additional energy for the, the, uh, administration to figure out this working parent that needs that extra day, that fifth day to work, how we can help accommodate them from a district.
For the discussion, I'll second that.
Great. Discussion?
Any comments from you? Because I just wasn't, uh, you know, in the plan at this point. It was just a discussion. Are you comfortable with that?
We, that would be our recommendation. There we go. That we stay with, with where we're at right now with the hybrid one. Go ahead.
I, I will say this. This isn't really part of this motion, but you mentioned give the administration more time to figure out how to help working parents. That's not, they would need to be part of that solution, but that's a community-wide issue. It's not a, it's not just the school.
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry. I guess I didn't clarify, but I just thought, we're, we're hearing twenty-five, thirty percent extra work with everybody there, that I'm just thinking, let's remove some anxiety piece of that and not worrying about, okay, is the board gonna make a change in November? Is the board gonna make a change in December? Remove that piece and maybe some more bandwidth so the administration can participate in that process. I'm perfectly willing to help out with that process as well. I've already done a bit of research on it. Let's see if we can get, we can get a solution. And then you know there's some other resources and people out there that want to help with that as well. So, I think we can try to hit that.
Brian, Mary would like to speak. Mary, go ahead and unmute, and you can speak.
Sounds like we have a motion on it, uh, before the board to allow us to remain in the model we're in until the end of the second quarter. I might add to our discussion that if there is, um, some energy in the community around seeking some alternative for kids on Wednesdays, that we might form a focus group to explore that, um, to see if there are any supports or resources we could provide for parents who are struggling with the Wednesday burden. But I agree that the consistency of the model we're in right now really needs to be established and maintained for a consistent period of time so that we know whether or not it is in theory and in practice really working.
Thanks, Mary. All right. So, we had a motion to remain in the hybrid one model through the end of the second quarter, which is January fifth. The end of the second quarter, Jeremy.
Well, my motion was January fifth. The other second quarter is January nineteenth or something. Yeah. I was saying until we come back to school after.
Okay. It's a quarter-by-quarter basis that the remote kids could come back if they wanted to, correct? I think it makes sense to do it from the end of the quarter, um, rather than an arbitrary date. If remote learners could decide to come back, that, that day they would come back. If remote learners could decide to come back, that, that day they would come back would be January fifteenth, correct, to start in the third quarter?
Yeah, they would need to let us know a week before.
The, the, the third quarter starts on January nineteenth. The end of the fifteenth, that's a long weekend. So we start on Tuesday.
I'll accept that friendly amendment then.
What's the date?
We are remaining in the hybrid one model until January nineteenth, the end of the second quarter. That is a unanimous motion passes. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Chris second? Any call favor? Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Brian?
Yeah.
Brian? Uh, I would be willing to work, uh, with you and to, um, pull together some key players like the library, um, churches, um, other organizations in the community that might be willing to provide some supports for parents on Wednesdays.
Okay, Mary, my hearing is bad. Do you mind if I give you a call on my way home?
No, not at all. Give me a call, but I, I just think if we might be able to pull some key players together to come up with some supervision for kids on Wednesday.
Okay, I'll give you a call in, uh, about ten minutes.
Okay, or, or let's talk tomorrow.
Okay, I'll call you tomorrow then.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you, Brian.